Seeing as we have a forum and it is well after seven o'clock, I am going to call the meeting to order and get started. We just have a few things to get started. A few things that we'll talk about first before we start the meeting. Number one, we had some requests that we use the clickers for all the votes. I just have a few things I want to say about that real quick. Town meeting is awesome. It is unique. Because everyone gets a chance to speak and say their mind there. Some people are afraid... Am I not talking loud enough?
No, no talking.
Okay. I just heard... Some people are afraid that what they have to say might make people upset. Well, it's my job to make sure that you can say that in a safe spot. So that's what we want to do. So if you have an opinion and you're a town resident, it counts. And we want to hear it. So just because you don't hear it said doesn't mean other people don't have the same opinion. So please, feel free to talk and feel safe to talk at town meetings. I will use the clicker if there's a lot of discussion, a lot of things going on. But if there's no discussion or other times, our town charter actually says that we do everything by voice vote. Okay? So we'll keep it moving with voice vote. I will change over to clicker a lot of times. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that this is a place where you need to be heard. And that's the great thing about town meetings. The selectmen, town manager, the finance committee, the planning board, the school committee, these guys are all great. They work so hard to do whatever they can for the town. Yes. But, but, they're not always right. So that's why we need to hear your, hear your voice and hear what you have to say. So that's it. So with that said, let it try out the clickers and make sure we all know how they work. Are we live on these? Question, four of us? All right. Okay, so we're going to try out the clickers. What is it? Tonight is a nice night for a town meeting. So if you think that is true, press one. If you disagree with that and want to vote no, press two. Okay? So everyone, you're on the clock. Go ahead. One is yes, two is no. Make sure you all know how to work it.
You can change your vote until the timer stops.
Well, most of you think it's a great night for a town meeting. But there's nothing wrong with them descending votes. All right. So the way a town meeting works, all right, everyone, if you're, when the motion is made and seconded, we will have a period of discussion. If you would like to talk about the topic, we just ask you to come down and line up in front of one of the two mics. All right? Don't talk until you are addressed by me to talk. And then when you, it is your turn to talk, please let us know who you are and your address. If you are a non-resident and you would like to talk, 10 people in the 10 residents would have to vote for you to talk, but we do allow professionals and things to come in and talk if need be. Okay? And with that said, who was, Neil? Chairman of the Select Board will be up. Oh, yeah, sorry. And we do have a two-minute time limit for all discussions. So try to keep everything concise and try not to repeat.
Thanks, John. What on? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right, terrific. I'm not going to take long. Neil Maximilian, Cliffwood Street, Chair of the Select Board. I want to echo what John said. This is a safe space. Police here, everybody, huge amount of town staff here. It really is a time for you to be heard and not a time to be afraid to voice your opinion, whatever it is. I mean, what's going on outside is scary enough in the political climates. This should not be one of those places. So I want to reiterate that. I have a few people to thank because we've had, as you know, most people know, several transitions this year, beginning with the retirement of Chris Ketchum after serving us for 10 years. He's out here. I'm sorry, Chris. You know, but that's, you know, he left us in a fantastic spot. And it's remarkable what we accomplished from, you know, his very good opportunity to move on to a great job till today when we have a new town manager under contract sitting before us. And to get there, we had... I promise I'll introduce him. I want to thank two people who served as interim town managers along the way. Our former state rep, Smitty Pignotelli. And our own DPW director, Bill Gott, for a while. So to get here, I also want to thank the steering committee for finding Jay. We got through that process. As I said, it's pretty remarkable to have had a number of candidates to consider, two to actually interview, have a contract executed before the end of the year, and Jay starting the first week of January. So with that, and then finally, we have two people here that do not like attention per se, but I'm sorry, gentlemen, we have two people who've dedicated both 33 and 31 years of their lives to this town. They're going to be retiring this summer. And that's our police chief, Steve O'Brien, and our fire chief, Chris Abra. Almost jumped up there. Sorry. Anyway, by the way, the two of them are going to be given a citation by our new state rep, Lee Davis. She's in session right now in Boston, but when she is here in town, she's going to be doing that in person. I have copies. I'm sure they don't want to do that here, but they will be, there'll be a ceremony for them. And finally, I think it's time for me to step away and introduce Jay Green, our new town manager.
I'm pleased to introduce myself to you tonight. I am Jay Green and I am your new town manager. I just want to take a moment. I'd like to thank the screening committee, the select board, the finance committee, some members in front, in particular, town staff that are with us tonight. Wave to everybody, please, town staff. School staff, thank you. It's been a great 90 days or so. It feels like nine years, but it's really just 90 days. But I, we're off to a great start mostly because of the folks surrounding me tonight on the stage. And of course, Chris's help with transition, it's been a pleasure and I look forward to serving. We're going to jump right into it tonight. Our fiscal '26 budget overview, what we're looking at this year, $38.6 million spending budget. That's up by approximately 9.2%. This will result in a 15.03% levy increase, and that is driven mostly by the assumption of the new debt service, public safety complex, wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project, and some fixed costs of which all municipalities are facing in this very challenging fiscal year. This budget fully funds the independent budget request to the Lennox Public Schools, and the budget also maintains level services focusing on core services while yet at the same time, we're still investing in our people, our infrastructure, and our other resources that keep Lennox Lennox. The fiscal year ahead, what we're looking at. The fiscal '26 budget assumes inflationary pressures. What are those? Utilities, gas, electric, health insurance. We're facing a 16% health insurance increase. That is consistent about Commonwealth-wide for any of the two or three insurance carriers that most communities have. The unknown economic environment, it does affect us. It could affect us worse, we're not sure, but that is the environment we're working in, as well as the impact on borrowing rates. We're using borrowing as a technique, as Lennox has in the past, in order to fund these large capital projects. And with that, the uncertain economic environment does have an impact on borrowing rates. We're still rated very high, thanks to the work of previous town managers and the select board. So we are able to enjoy that at this time, but that may not always be the case based on those factors. This budget does provide funds that are needed for operational investments in our town. There are resources to be efficient and effective, such as equipment, such as software, et cetera, in order to make us deliver services to you better, faster, and in a more efficient manner. Competitive wages to recruit and retain. We cannot do what we are expected to do, what you expect us to do, without making sure that we can recruit and retain those folks. And some of them, not all, but some of them are sitting right now. And I can tell you, just in the few months I've worked with them, we have an exceptional, exceptional group of folks, from department heads all the way down to our folks that man DPW, police, fire, et cetera, our boards, our committees, that do stuff for free. Lennox is in very good shape, staffed by very dedicated people. Our new public safety complex, fun project, expensive, but it's something that Lennox is going to be proud of. It'll be a great home for our public safety professionals that work hard to keep us safe, particularly in a high tourist season, when our population almost doubles. So this budget takes that into effect. Our EMS staffing plan, you'll be hearing a lot about EMS, not just in Lennox, but also within the entire county, not just southern Berkshire, central and northern. That is a fact. Chief O'Brien has put together a great plan in order for us to accommodate that. This budget begins those steps this year. Our capital plan supports a variety of departments, as you can see. It's not just all going to one department. We're spreading that around to make sure we keep all of our departments competitive. And lastly, more than anything, we'll monitor and assess our resources to mitigate that debt impact for fiscal '27. That's mostly our receipts, our forecasting that we do to be sure that the performance is matching what we want. And Anna Osborne and I are town accountant. And our treasurer are very helpful. If we put our, cross our fingers and things go well in fiscal year '27, a year from now, we'll be talking about some mitigation techniques in order to bring down that debt service impact that you're going to see tonight. Where does the money come from? This hasn't changed. This is a familiar pie chart that we've had. Tax revenue at about 56.6%, that's our real estate, as well as our CIP. Local revenue comes in at 12.8%. Our enterprise accounts, state aid, of course, free cash, and our community preservation money that comes in as well. So nothing has changed there. That structure is still the same. And where does the money go? It comes in and it goes out. The same proportions are pretty much there too. As you can see, the big green, our education budget is still about 46.2% total town spending, followed by public safety, general government, public works, and then other miscellaneous items that are there. So no big changes there. That's about the same as we've had for the previous fiscal years. Estimated 2026 tax rate. Our property valuation using fiscal '25 numbers is hovering about 1.9 million. That's an excellent, 1.9 billion, excuse me. Property tax levy, this is an estimate for fiscal year '26, beginning July 1, at about $21.9 million, based on our spending plan. That tax rate projection does include the 15% increase, as I mentioned earlier. Tax rate projected for residential will be $10.41 versus $9.05 that Chris left me with, and I've just had to deliver that bad news. Sorry, Chris. Our tax rate, CIP, commercial industrial property, will be about $15.16 versus $13.18. Keep in mind, however, these are just projections. We're talking in May, what numbers we won't have until the end of the year when the new growth numbers are final. Median residential taxes, using the median home assessed value here in the town, of $512,800, that's a decrease in value of $31,200. That projects a tax bill of approximately $5,338. It's a $724 annual increase, broken out to our quarterly billing to about $181. As a reminder, those are all just estimated numbers. Our current reserve permissions, little bit of a happier slide here. Current reserve positions, we're still in excellent financial shape. None of that has changed. Our free cash certified for the last available figure, $4,313,737. General stabilization fund is $760,000. Debt service stabilization fund, $1.8 million. There's an article tonight asking to put in another $250,000. We'll have over $2 million available for next year in order to mitigate the tax levy hit. Fire and rescue apparatus fund, Chief O'Brien's got $1.1 million in there. You'll see that article a little later tonight. Ambulance replacement fund at $56,000. OPEB, always a great topic among municipal managers, but this is a very healthy number for Lennox, $9.1 million. Outstanding number. Water enterprise, our wastewater enterprise retained earnings are very healthy. The rest of River Settlement Fund, which we discussed, I attended the December special town meeting, it was placed into the special reserve trust. We're at $26,467 there. And our excess levy capacity for this year is a healthy $3.5 million. Overall warrant highlights tonight, what's on the roadmap as soon as I sit down and stop talking. Article two, will provide for the existing municipal services, tactical investments in core services, and will fund our public safety complex, wastewater treatment plant projects. Article three is your school committee article. Select board and the finance committee unanimously support the school fiscal '26 budget. Articles four and five, as you've seen in previous years, are our enterprise funds for sewer and water. Those are entirely supported by user fees, those folks who are connected to both of those systems. And article 11 is the purchase of a new ladder truck for the fire department. Description that you see is in the materials handed out to you tonight or accessed earlier in the week. And lastly, the rest of the roadmap is some capital items, CPA, zoning bylaws, veterans' exemption changes, and some other appropriation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to moderator McNich and thank you all for participating this evening.
Thank you, Jay and Dave.
Is that better? Okay. Thanks, Bill. Okay, buddy. Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to waive the reading of the warrant and return of service thereof, and to authorize the moderator pursuant to ask general laws, Chapter 39, Section 15, to declare a two-thirds vote out of voice votes if he deems so.
Don't tell me, tell them.
So we're going to let John determine whether or not a motion should pass with two-thirds vote.
This just says that I can call the votes as it says in our bylaws. And that we waive the readings of the warrant, so we don't have to read everything that's written on, in the warrant. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You name it. Number two.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, Article two. I move that the town vote to appropriate $11,244,426 to provide for said appropriation, raise the appropriate $10,400, $744,426, and transfer $500,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1, 2024, with the operating expenses of the town for the fiscal year 2026, as printed in the warrant. But we'll go through those. So bear with me, there's an awful lot of...
Okay, so just a little point of order here, guys. Dave's got to go through this line by line. If you would like to talk about any of these things, alls you do is when he says that line, yell "hold." And I will mark it down on my sheet, and then we'll move on to the next one, and then we will come back and talk about each one in order as we go through. All right, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Administrative and finance, $44,148. Town clerk, $104,924. Town treasurer, collector, $203,245. Compensation reserve, $213,000. Operations support, $167,100. Elections and registration, $14,414. Economic development and advertising, $140,000. I'm sorry, $140,000. Town debt and interest, $1266,840. Audit reserve account, $930,443. Insurance and bonds and OPEB, $743,616. Land use department, $184,104. Assessor, $152,943. Building and inspection services, $205,392. Town building, $238,988. And the general government subtotal is $5,9157. Police department, $17,8750. Fire department, $912,499. Emergency management, $5,500. Ambulance squad, $634,828. Public safety subtotal is $3,261,577. Vocational education, $212,212. Education subtotal, $212,212. Highway department, $897,911. Snow and ice, $257,500. Cemetery, $37,987. Public works subtotal, $11,192,83. Board of Health, $299,595. Veteran services, $30,374. And human services subtotal, $329,969. Lennox library, $614,038. Community center, $563,877. Cultural council grants, $10,000. Cultural district, $15,000. Academy building, $8,063. Historical commission, $25,950. Celebrations, $2,500. Cultural and recreational subtotal, $1239,428. The total, the total becomes $11,244,426.
Okay, we did have one hold on town debt and interest.
Here's Randall, 423, New Lennox Road, Lennox. This is a five-fold increase in this, and I don't like a further explanation.
I could start to answer your question. Want to stay there? See, just in case you have a follow-up. I could start to answer your question. In previous town meetings, we've authorized the borrowing of money for the construction of the public safety building, and we're anticipating also borrowing money for the sewer treatment plant. And we need, we need to start paying it back. So that's what, is that correct? I assume that's what that article is about. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, we are voting on article... Oh, explanation, didn't you argue that?
So this year presents one of the most challenging budget environments in recent history, as a result of the inflammatory economic environment, which has increased costs significantly, providing municipal services. The most impactful items in this year's budget are nondiscretionary costs, such as 16% insurance increase, expected debt service payments to fund the public safety complex construction, and water, wastewater re-treatment, treatment plant upgrade. These long anticipated projects are essential to keeping our infrastructure in a state of good repair. This year's operating budget for the town, including municipal appropriations, can be considered a level service budget that ensures maintaining responsible reserve levels while continuing to support and invest in core services.
Okay, now we're voting on article two. Favorably, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, vote carries. Article three.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Mary Beth Metz, 20 Dunmore Court. I move that the town vote to appropriate $17,839,358, and to provide for said appropriation, raise and appropriate $17,689,358, and transfer the sum of $150,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1, 2024, for the operating expenses of the Lennox Public Schools for fiscal year 2026.
Second, all right. Explanation.
This article provides for the general fund portion of the budget for the Lennox Public Schools. The school committee, the select board, and the finance committee unanimously recommend favorable passage of this request. I'd like to invite up school committee chairman, Orin Cass, to further explain this item.
Let's see, is this low enough for someone as short as me? Probably. Mr. Moderator, Orin Cass, 8, Maple Street. Thank you, everyone, for this chance to present just for a minute about the budget. I figured it would be worth letting you all know what, what you're buying, in a sense. We, in the school committee and in the Lennox Public Schools, are extraordinarily fortunate to have such strong support from the community. But I think the community is also extraordinarily fortunate to have such fantastic schools. And I wanted to highlight a little bit of what we've seen going on there. I want to start by thanking fellow members of the school committee, vice chair Veronica Fenton, secretary Michael DuPont, Kim Graham, Kim Winger, Bob Munch, and David Rimmeler. Bob and David are both retiring this year after giving many, many years of Monday nights to the school committee. So thank you to all of them. And also acknowledge we have four teachers retiring after many years in the district. Linda Consolini, Mary Cherry, Ellen Ferris, and Lynn Neelin, who have given countless hours to, to our children. So we are, we are very grateful for all of them. If you can flip to, yes, perfect, the first slide. So district-wide, we've accomplished a tremendous amount, I think, this past year, starting with some excellent new contracts. And, and want to mention our superintendent, Dr. Bill Collins, who's been with us now for two years, and has just agreed to an extension for four more. He has been an incredible leader for the district, and that kind of continuity, I think, makes, makes an incredible difference in what we're able to accomplish. We've also completed negotiations with both our teachers and our custodians, all of whom do extraordinary work. I've, I've been through several rounds of negotiation at this point. These were particularly constructive and collaborative, and so I think it's worth recognizing. We're very fortunate to be in a town where, at the end of the day, everybody's on the same page, everybody focuses on, on what is best for the kids. And what you are seeing in this budget reflects the, the go-forward figures that we have agreed to, that I think keep us in a very sustainable place while also providing the compensation that, that our staff deserve. Curriculum and data, it's very important to note that we have essentially added a new position. Dr. Collins has planned for a transition where Brenda Kelly, who's currently the principal at Morris, is moving up into a new position, handling curriculum and instruction and assessment for the entire district. And in that role, has now already started to bring all of our data and benchmarking and following students all the way through the middle school, so that we help them with that transition from elementary school into the high school. Student services is an incredible strength for us. It is a real priority that we serve all students. And Brian Kelly has both implemented what's called a multi-tiered support system, so that we don't just have a classroom or a special ed classroom, but we're able to support kids at whatever level they need while keeping them in the classroom to the extent possible. He also had to go through the state audit process this year, which is six months of excruciatingly grueling forms and data requests, and was, we were one of the very few districts to receive what, what does not sound glamorous, but is a no-finding, which means the best you can do, which showed that every i had been dotted and every t had been crossed, in addition to, of course, the actual service. in addition to, of course, the actual serving of the students. And so that, that is an incredible accomplishment as well. Uh, new teachers are a huge priority for us, and Dr. Collins in particular has implemented a, a really comprehensive mentoring and new teacher induction program. Uh, two of our teachers, Mary Sorrentino and Jenna White, lead it. Uh, and that has become a, a really important pipeline for us that we're also investing in, in our contracts. So, two consecutive contracts now for our teachers. We have significantly increased what we pay a new teacher coming in at the first year. Uh, to make sure, as a starting point, it truly is a, a living wage here in our community, uh, but that it's also fully respecting all of the effort they've obviously put in to get to that point. And so, uh, without breaking the bank on the overall budget, we are now in a position to offer far more generous compensation to a new teacher just starting out. We're also now able to offer to support them in pursuing their masters. Uh, and I think, thinking countywide, even statewide, that will be a huge advantage to us as we bring in our next generation of educators. And then finally, we have the building project. Um, I want to mention Bob Vaughn, who, in addition to giving so many years as, as our elementary school principal, and then as the Chairman of the School Committee, is now leading the project to figure out what we can do to improve the facilities at the high school, uh, while especially given all of these other commitments we have, keeping the cost as low as possible. So, that is in progress. We are fortunate to have the state offering to help support it, and you will hear a lot more about that as we plan. Really quickly inside the actual school buildings, uh, it, it is hard to convey how extraordinary our schools are. If you have not a chance to spend some time in them, I recommend it. Uh, Morris Elementary School, where I have two kids, uh, creates just an extraordinary school culture, a sense of belonging, uh, support for all students, led by teachers and staff, for who that is a priority. Um, Brenda Kelly, I mentioned, our Principal was in fact statewide Elementary School Principal of the Year this past year. Uh, and we already have now joining us Holly Souls, who is currently Assistant Principal, and, and very quickly filling Brenda's shoes as she moves on, uh, into the instruction and curriculum role. And so we will have a, a seamless transition there. Uh, while we're talking about things we are apparently number one in, uh, we also received the Massachusetts Reading Association's Exemplary Reading Program Award. Uh, that's not like we give an exemplary award to all the good districts. That is the one elementary school in the state that received the exemplary program for reading. And most excitingly, we built a new playground, uh, which is wonderful for the students, but also wonderful for everybody in the community, uh, and is certainly getting a lot of use. Uh, finally, for the high school, equally extraordinary things going on there. For a school of its size, the, the range of offerings, not just academic, but also athletics, also arts, also, uh, non-college pathways, which have become a real priority for us, uh, are just not something you see in a school of this size. And, and the way that our faculty and staff are able to provide that is really extraordinary. Uh, following through on, on the emphasis on reading and literacy, which all the evidence says is the most important thing we can be focused on. Uh, our students, more than ninety percent of them, uh, achieve meets or exceeds on the state reading tests. That is something I believe this year only six schools in the entire state accomplished. The Career Pathways Program is a huge focus for us. We obviously send a lot of students to many of the top universities around the country. Uh, but it is equally important that we have good options for people whom that is not the choice for. And we now have two different pathways programs, uh, one in business, one in healthcare, with literally dozens of our students getting, uh, on-the-job training, sometimes through internships, other hands-on training, college course credit, where that's helpful, uh, and all therefore being in a position to, to move forward in whatever direction they want. And that's something we will continue to invest in. And finally, I just wanted to highlight that after a period of turnover at the high school in particular, we, we have terrific leadership there as well. Principal Jeremiah Ames, Assistant Principal Marcus Haas, and it is in fact Principal Appreciation Day. Just to give one example, the kinds of things they're doing, they've launched an entirely new student wellness initiative this year with workshops where they bring in partners from the community to help students with financial health, mental health, social health, really, all of those things that you don't necessarily get in the classroom. Uh, and, and a real treat for us has been the launch of our modified basketball program, which you see a, a picture over there for, for kids coming with all different abilities. Uh, if, if you have any chance to see a modified basketball game, I highly recommend it. It is an, an extraordinary culture that they have built there. So, thank you to all of the administrators, uh, and, and all the teachers and staff who are, are doing this for our children. And now the budget. Save the most important for last, and of course, Melissa Topowski, our Assistant Superintendent, who handles all of this. You, you may have seen in the news, there are a lot of districts facing very substantial budget pressures, having to make a lot of painful choices. I would love to be able to tell you the budget is going up less here than it is, but the planning that our team has done over the past couple of years has meant that we are in a sustainable position and able to move forward without having to make those kinds of trade-offs, which is, is an incredible tribute to just the forward-looking planning and, and responsible budgeting that they've been doing all along. So thank you, Melissa, for leading us on that. This is the basic operating budget. This is what actually, uh, happens in the schools that we budget for every year. We break it into three categories of increase. The first is just that level service increase, going up for the same reasons you've heard everywhere else in the town, contractual provisions, utilities, maintenance, and so forth. Um, that's up less than three percent, so, uh, keeping that growth very low. Uh, and then we have two areas where we're investing. One is in improving some current services. We are doing some additional PD work with the teachers. We are upgrading some software and just dipping a toe into AI, which is especially important in the education space. And we're expanding our coverage of funding for field trips to make sure that every student can go uh, on the especially important trips like, uh, we do in nature's classroom program, uh, in the middle school. I should say, we have funding to ensure all students can always go on the trips if they need assistance, but we want to build some of these core ones just into the budget to make it just for granted that this is something that everyone is doing. And then we have a couple of things we're adding. The two this year are a part-time grant writer, uh, and an English and Language Arts Interventionist to help those students who, who are still behind the curve at the middle school. Uh, the grant writer is just a cost this year. I would expect by next year, we will be telling you that that has paid more than for itself in terms of more grants that we're able to receive. And so that brings us up to an operating budget of thirteen point seven million, which is a total increase of four point two percent. The last slide now looks at the total appropriation, which adds to that growth as well the growth in benefits, uh, that we share that substantial cost with the rest of the town. And so you'll see, the first piece here is our operating budget, going up four point two percent of operating, going up a little bit less of the total amount we're spending. Uh, you see benefits, which are up about twelve percent for benefits cost, about two point six percent of the total cost. Uh, and so that would lead to a five point eight percent increase, which is what you see in the warrant. Uh, the last thing I want to acknowledge that, that you see here is that we have also been drawing on free cash over the last couple of years. Uh, we had a three hundred thousand dollar support from free cash last year because of a number of very unexpected, uh, expenses in special education. The goal has always been to work that into the budget and smooth it out. And so we asked to reduce that, to only use a hundred and fifty thousand this year. Uh, our expectation is that we will not use any free cash next year. And so the total increase then that taxpayers see is that six point eight percent at the bottom. And we hope you will agree that this is a good use of the money, that our kids benefit extraordinarily for it. And again, we thank you for all the support you give us here and, and throughout the year in our community.
Yeah, we don't have a motion and a second. Any discussion, anyone?
Yes.
My name is Arthur Oliver. I reside at thirty-five, uh, Greenwood Street in Lennox. And I agree with everything. I would just like to point out that there are two arts programs in this school. One is the money allocated to the Fall Festival of Shakespeare, which I absolutely support. And then there is the other arts training program, which gets significantly less funding than the Fall Festival of Shakespeare. I would like to see a balance restored so that the arts program, which does musicals, equals the money that is given to the Fall Festival of Shakespeare. The disparity in the money equated to both is disappointing. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Hitchcock, De Gregore of eighty-one Walker Street. I'm wondering how in developing your budget, you've considered possible changes in some federal support for special education?
Yeah. Thank you, it's a very good question. Um, and you'll actually see later in the warrant, we have a, um, emergency fund, just like all those other funds that Jay was speaking to. Uh, and so we're requesting to increase that a little bit this year. The state limits how much we can increase it, uh, but we would want to expand what we can fund up to the maximum. Uh, and that would, hopefully, we won't have to use it, but that would account, I, we think fairly well for any risks we might have there.
Okay, we are voting on Article Three. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, Ed Lane, one oh one Crystal Street, Lenox Dale. I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for the Sewer Department. Sewer operations, one million, one hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Debt service, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Capital expenditures, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, for a total of two million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, two million, six, zero, ninety-two dollars. Retained earnings, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, thirty-four dollars, for a total of two hundred, or two million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, is there a second, explanation?
Uh, yeah, uh, simply enough, this is money to run the, the Sewer Department. And it's, uh, it should be noted here that the Sewer Department is an enterprise fund, so all the money that funds it is from charges and, uh, other departmental revenue. It's not from the town coffers.
Okay, we're voting on Article Four. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Five. I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for the Water Department. Water operations, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Debt service, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Capital expenditures, one hundred thousand dollars. And transfer to reserve, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, for a total of one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, one million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Retained earnings, one hundred thousand dollars, for a total of one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars.
Explanation.
Uh, exactly the same explanation as the Sewer Department. This is an enterprise fund. We don't receive the town funds for this. It's all run by user charges and, uh, other department revenue.
Okay, we are voting on Article Five. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Max Schurf, eighty Pine Knoll. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, under the provisions of Chapter Ninety of the General Laws, to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges. Apologies, that's for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, explanation.
Per state law, each year we seek voter approval to accept state funding for roadwork in town. We expect to receive approximately four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents in Chapter Ninety funds this year, an increase of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, one, so one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents, if new legislation passes. This increase is a result of a formula change in how these funds are distributed to communities and is contingent on legislative approval of a five-year, one and a half billion dollar multi-bond authorization by the state legislature.
Okay, we are voting on Article Six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Mr. Moderator, hello again, Neil Maximilian, Cliffwood Street. This is a Department capital, uh, warrant, so I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, ninety thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for the following Department capital expenditures, which are: Public Works, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Technology, fifty thousand dollars. School Department, four hundred thousand dollars. Fire Department, twenty-five thousand dollars. EMS, one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Police Department, twenty-five thousand dollars. Elections, twenty-five thousand dollars. I'll note that includes purchasing of the clickers at some point. Uh, Academy Building, ten thousand dollars. Admin and Finance, fifty thousand. Board of Health, six thousand, four hundred and sixty. And Community Center, one hundred thousand. So the total, uh, to provide for such, said appropriations to transfer from free cash as certified July first of twenty-four, the same sum of one million, ninety thousand, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Four hundred and sixty dollars, pardon me.
Okay, explanation.
Uh, each year we do the same thing, which is to appropriate, uh, funds to each department, on a department-by-department basis for their capital equipment, facilities, and other improvements. Uh, we've had a robust capital plan for a long time, and this will allow us to continue that.
Okay, we are voting on Article Seven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Sorry, everyone, a separate page. Uh, Article Eight. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one point two million dollars to pay the cost of design, construction, and upgrade, for upgrading and extending the water main on the homes of Terrace, including payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, the Approval of the Selectment, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Mass. Journal Law, Chapter Forty-four, Subchapter Eight, Five of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to, of the town thereto. And I will note, this requires a two-thirds majority.
Second, all right, explanation.
We've begun work on homes with Terrace. This is for Superintendent Gop to continue that work to replace old water lines with new ductile line, water lines. It gives us some redundancy, it avoids service interruptions if there's something to fix. I think, uh, yet- I think the cost estimate of $1,200,000 is probably quite conservative. I would imagine that we'd probably be in the $800,000 to $900,000 range, but that'll go out to bid competitively. I've heard from Billy that there's already interest expressed, so we will borrow only the amount once we have bids in hand to pay for it.
Hi, it's Mary Ann Elrod, 15 Cliffwood Street. So it's 1. something million for just Homeswood Terrace, right? Just that road?
No. Bill, do you want to give a more clear explanation?
I'm just wondering what we're in for, if that's what it costs.
No. Phil Gop, EPW 1065 West Stepway Road. So this project actually goes down Homes Road from the Donovan Jaguar area, up Homes Road, through Homeswood Terrace, behind the Monroe Dealer, and connect to Hadad. So there's a large loop. We're creating a large loop right now. It runs down Pittsville-Lennox Road in Dead Ends. So if there's ever an issue in that section of town, everything is shut down. The whole north end is shut down. There's no redundancy in the system. And our system should, it's always better to have a loop to get fresh water if it's not a dead end. So the Homeswood Terrace area is kind of what, said it a little more clearly, but it's a larger area. It's like 3,000 feet of water pipe.
It makes more sense. I still wonder what we're in for for infrastructure and water mains in the future, but that'll be another town meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you think about the loop that connects Up Seven and then comes back down Homes Road, those are straight shots. And some of them are pipe that's, you know, 50-plus years old and will fail, so.
Yeah, we've had some major breaks on the Homes Road section by Donovan Jaguar. And the whole, that whole side of town is just, there's no pressure, there's no water. So this will hopefully fix all that.
Okay, we are voting on Article Eight. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries, unanimous.
Mr. Moderator. Tom Delasco, 12 Hillside Drive, Community Preservation Committee Chair. Article Nine. I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve for future appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2026, exactly as appearing in the warrant for this annual town meeting, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Is there a second? Explanation?
This year, Town Council has recommended that the Community Preservation Act appropriations be broken up into two separate articles. Article Nine presents the CPC's request for annual funding of the three categories: Historic Preservation, Community Housing, and Open Space and Recreation, as well as for administrative expenses. Article Ten will present the projects that the CPC is recommending to town meeting for approval. Under Article Nine, 10% of annual revenue goes to each of the three categories. The Department of Revenue recommended that we fund an additional $4,382 to each of the three categories this year because we did not appropriate the full 10% of annual revenues last year. Therefore, $48,164.77 plus $4,382, a total of $52,546.77, goes to the Historic Preservation Reserve. $48,164.77 plus $4,382, a total of $52,546.77, goes to the Community Housing Reserve. $48,164.77 plus $4,382, a total of $52,546.77, goes to the Open Space and Reserve. 5% of annual revenue, $24,082.39, goes to administrative expenses.
Okay, we are voting on Article Nine. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous.
Article Ten. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 2026 the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Explanation?
The Community Preservation Committee received three applications for projects covering the Historic Preservation and Community Housing categories. The committee met over several meetings in the late fall and early winter to hear from the project applicants, consider the merits of the proposed projects, and vote whether or not to recommend them to town meeting. Following is a brief overview of the projects. Under the Historic Preservation category, Church on the Hill, ADA improvements, lighting and foundation repair. The Church on the Hill is applied to the CPC to fund a portion of the cost to reconstruct an accessible ramp, reconstruct the front stairs, make exterior lighting improvements, and make structural repairs to the building foundation. The total project cost will be over $250,000. They are asking the Lennox CPC to contribute $117,152. The balance will be provided through the church's endowment and a capital fundraising campaign. The Mount, entrance gateway restoration. The Mount is applied to the CPC to fund the cost to restore the main entrance gateway off Plunkett Street. The gateway restoration is a small portion of a much larger overall parking and landscaping project that has a total cost of over $1 million. They are asking the Lennox CPC to contribute $109,408. The balance will be provided through Massachusetts Cultural Council and Office of Tourism Grants, individual donors, and the Mount's own cash reserves. Under the Community Housing category, Penrose, 283 Pittsville Road Housing Project. As we know, Penrose is constructing an affordable housing project near the Marriott Hotel and the old Brushwood Farm. The town previously approved CPC grants totaling $1 million towards this project, which is on track to be completed later this year. This year, Penrose has applied for a CPC grant of $400,000 toward another affordable housing project that they want to construct at 283 Pittsville Road. This site is located across Route 7 and 20 from Lion Kiln Road. CPC felt that it would be better to wait until the current project at Brushwood Farm is complete, fully populated, and its effects on the town are known before committing funds to another project. This application was not approved by the CPC.
Any discussion? Come on up.
All right, Phyllis Faye, 4W2 Walker Street. I would concur with the CPC's request on the third article. If they have not approved it, I don't think the town should as well. We need to wait to see what the initial one does first.
Okay, we are voting on Article Ten. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries.
Dave Roach, 375 Uzatonic Street. Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,900,000 for the purchase of a new ladder truck, equipment, and other related costs, and further, thanks, and further to provide for said appropriation, transfer the balance of $1,100,000 from the fire engine stabilization account, and $800,000 from free cash so-called as certified on July 1st, 2024.
Explanation?
So every year, we put a little bit aside for the purchase of a new fire truck and other equipment. So over the years, we've put away $1,001,000. So this year, the fire ladder truck has been planning to purchase a new ladder truck to replace the truck number five, a 30-year-old truck, 1996 Spartan. The fire department has spent approximately $600,000 or $6,000 in the past year alone on repairs for Truck Five, keep Truck Five roadworthy. The new truck will be a stock model specification set by the committee. If ordered this summer, anticipated delivery date will be one year out.
Sonya Baikovsky, 225 Main Street. I have a couple questions.
Speak up, please.
Okay, I'll move that closer. Oh, I have a couple questions. We've appropriated, obviously, in the fire engine stabilization account, this $1,100,000. Apparently, in recent, excuse me, recent years, Adams has spent about $700,000 on a fire truck. Dalton, I think, rather recently, just spent just under $1 million for a fire truck. I don't know who buys our fire trucks. I don't know if they're like me and go to the scanner at Stop &amp; Shop to look for a coupon, but it just seems like the cost for this one is really high, and I don't know why. Is there a bidding process for fire trucks? I have no idea.
Sonya, probably the best explanation for this is those other towns probably did buy a truck, maybe a pumper truck. We're comparing apples and oranges. This is probably the least, most expensive fire truck in your fleet that you would have to replace. It's a ladder truck. It's a 100-foot ladder truck, so very, very expensive. That's why it looks out of line with some other towns, what they bought. But if you do it apples to apples, that's what, unfortunately, that's what equipment does cost.
Okay, the other reason I ask this is simply, by the end of tonight, we are voting to take over $5 million from free cash. And I'm no accountant, but free cash always seemed to be, I believe you said at the beginning of the meeting, a reserve account of some kind. And we always seem to have somewhere between $4 to $5 million in it as a town. And I'm just concerned that we're, if we say yes to every article tonight, we're going to be spending over $5 million from that, which, if we were not moving more funds into it, would deplete it. So for that reason, I'm just going to suggest to amend this article to drop the "and $800,000 from free cash" from this article.
Number one. If I could have heard you, I could have probably answered the question. Sonya, in order to do this, you're going to have to do it in writing. Do you have a form for her to fill out?
While you're doing that, I might be able, might be able to explain the borrowing question I think I heard you ask. Sonya?
Hold on, we have a, Sonya's made a motion to amend. We need a second for that?
Second.
Second, okay. Now you guys can discuss. The motion is they're moving to amend Article 11 to drop "and $800,000 from free cash." So basically, not taking the money out of free cash, is what they're saying. Reducing it down to 1.1 million dollars of an appropriation.
Do you want to explain something, or are you going to say something?
Well, you asked about all the borrowing. They were talking about using from free cash. And I'm not going to speak to, we won't be able to afford a truck if we make this, you know, reduction, but keep in mind that the projects that we're now incurring debt on were discussed prior to 2018 with waste water and public safety. So that big jump is, I mean, in summary, the big jump this year is 16% across the board for health insurance. It's beating up everybody in Berkshire County statewide. And the fact that the $20 million that we asked for, you know, years ago for public safety, we're starting to pay debt on now. We have stabilization funds that are paying that. We do a lot of balancing of short-term, what's known as bands, bond authorization notes, to try to optimize the interest rate. And yes, we're concerned about future large projects because with this budget that we have here, we are able, we've talked to Bound Council to keep our AAA rating. Were we to do something new and different, that would be a concern. I'm talking about overall borrowing in the budget today, not specific fire truck.
Okay, and just remember, when we are discussing this, we are just discussing the amendment. So we're not discussing the article, we're just discussing the amendment for right now.
Just to give everybody a little bit more information about free cash, you saw that number at the beginning of the presentation. That's the grand total of free cash that is certified by the Department of Revenue, which is essentially money that is closed out at the end of fiscal year '24. Those are funds that we brought in above our forecasted receipts, and that is also money that we didn't spend on the budgetary line items. For this year, if you were to remove the Rest of River money, we had $3,506,885. We're asking that we appropriate this evening from that amount, 2.9 million. We will have left over at the end of tonight, should all these articles go through, $586,425. Also, keep in mind, at the December special town meeting, there are also some appropriations made also from that free cash number. So we'll have $586,000 left. That will be rolled into the amount due to be certified, again, by the Department of Revenue in normal course when fiscal year '25 closes out. And we anticipate that number, as of now, forecast to be about the same historical, same as we have, anywhere from $3 to $4 million. So in terms of the finances of how we're paying for that, that is, should the amendment pass and that $800,000 is removed, should we wish to continue to buy the fire truck, that'll have to be raised on the tax levy, increasing the tax levy by $800,000. Hope that helps explain some of the mechanics.
It seems to me that if we have a 30-year-old, sorry, Hank Mayman, 32 Hubbard Street. It seems to me that if we have a 30-year-old truck that's in need of constant repair, it doesn't make sense to buy a ladder truck without a ladder. So therefore, I would strongly urge that we approve the initial request and vote no on this amendment.
Okay, we are voting on the amendment, not on the article, folks. We're just voting on the amendment to strike the line, $800,000 from free cash. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. More discussion on the article, anyone? Okay, we are voting on Article...
11.
11? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries.
Article 12.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Moderator. Hi.
Sorry.
Before you go, just as a point of reference, that, to me, felt like a perfect opportunity to have used the clickers to allow people to vote in the amendment, since there was a lot of dialogue back and forth. I think it's just important that we keep that in mind, because I do think, to your point earlier, that in order for us to have a robust democracy and to allow everyone to express their viewpoint, we should take the opportunity to use the clickers when there is robust dialogue like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just need to know your name.
Randy Grimmon, 169 Under Mountain Road.
Got that. Thank you. Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $130,000 to be placed in the ambulance stabilization account, and further, to provide for said appropriation, transfer the sum of $130,000 from free cash so-called as certified on July 1st. of $130,000 from free cash so-called as certified on July 1st, 2024. So just as with the fire truck, we put some money aside every year for a new ambulance so we don't get hit with that bill when it comes due. So we're asking you to appropriate or to vote yes on Article 12.
Okay, Article 12. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Max Sherf, 80 Pine Knoll. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 to be placed in the debt stabilization account, and further to provide for said appropriation, transfer the sum of $250,000 from free cash so-called as certified on July 1st, 2024.
Exclamation.
This will assist in mitigating the debt service impact to the tax levy in combination with other appropriations.
Okay, we're voting on Article 13. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Romeo, 54 Reynolds Street. I'm also the chair of the Board of Assessors. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22i, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption by the Consumer Price Index CPI for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025. Yes, a new law was passed in August of 2024 called the HERO Act, an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans. This act is aimed at enhancing benefits for veterans with disabilities in Massachusetts. There are three components of this law. Two need to be approved at tonight's meeting in order to extend these benefits to Lenox Article 14, if accepted, would enable qualified veterans to receive an additional cost of living adjustment. The COLA would be determined annually by the Consumer Price Index for the year as determined by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, we are voting on Article 14. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous.
Article 15. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption by 100% of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in Clause 22J, to be effective for the applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025.
Exclamation.
The second improvement will enable veterans who qualify under Clause J, those who have a service-related disability, would be eligible to receive an additional 5 to 100% of their existing benefit. 100% increase was improved by the Board of Selectmen. For example, those who have a qualified disability between 1 and 99%, currently receive a $400 exemption. With approval of this act, the benefit will increase to $800. This would also enable veterans who have 100% service-related disability qualifying them for $1,000 exemption, their benefit would increase to $2,000. In summary, the additional cost for both of these improvements would be approximately $15,800 plus the COLA. If the above increases are not covered by the funds that are received from the state for these benefits, they would be expensed through the Assessor's overlay account. There is a third improvement under 22E, entitled Veterans Who Have 100% Disability to Receive One Excise Tax Completely Abated. This is already in effect, and therefore, further approval is not needed for that one. I'll attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we are voting on Article 15. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Delasco, 12 Hillside Drive, Planning Board Chair. Article 16, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by creating a new Section 8.19, Mobile Food Establishments, as well as associated changes to Section 4 definitions and Section 5.2 Schedule of Uses, as set out in a handout at town meeting in substantially the same form as discussed at the Planning Board public hearing on April 8th, 2025.
Is there a second? Exclamation.
Food trucks, as they're commonly known, have operated in town for some time. However, these have commonly been located on public land or within the public ways along the sides of streets. These are regulated and permitted by the Board of Selectmen. However, there have been recent instances of food trucks operating on private property which are open to the public. Since the zoning bylaw regulates uses on private property, there is a need to have rules in place that allow them, allow for them in certain areas and specify some simple regulations. Many other towns in Massachusetts have adopted similar rules, and the state has provided guidance as well. For this presentation, please refer to the Green Article 16 handout. The bylaw codifies mobile food establishments by the definition shown and designates where they can and cannot operate in town per the use table. They are allowed as of right in the commercial and industrial zones. The new bylaw applies to mobile food establishments that operate on privately-owned commercial property and are open to the public. It does not apply to mobile food establishments operating on private residential properties for events not open to the public. An example would be someone hosting a graduation party on their property who wants to have a food truck cater the event. The bylaw outlines some simple general requirements, such as obtaining and displaying the proper health department permits, complying with dimensional requirements, limits on operating hours, and the use of combustion-powered generators. It also outlines some basic requirements for maintaining a clean and safe environment where the mobile food establishment is operating. The bylaw also allows for the mobile food establishment to have one sign as shown. At this point, I'd like to take the opportunity to -- So as I -- Town Council just wanted me to reiterate that the Planning Board held a public hearing on this, it was on April 8th, and voted to move this to town meeting and recommend that it be passed. But at this opportunity, at this point, I'd like to take the opportunity to move to amend the zoning bylaw by changing in the table of uses under Section 5.2, where we say no in the R3A, R1A, R30, and R15, make them all yes, that they would be allowed. There was an oversight on the Planning Board's part, not realizing that there's many large establishments located in the, mainly in the R1A, that are commercial uses, but would also like to have food trucks on occasion for events that would be open to the public. So by changing those uses from noes to yeses, that would just resolve that problem.
Tom, can you actually make a formal motion to amend?
Yes.
Can you do that?
So I'd like to, I would move to amend the zoning, the proposed zoning bylaw by changing the Schedule of Uses Table 5.2 from the noes to yeses in the four residential zones.
A second. All right. All right, we have it in writing. All right, it's been, motion's been made and amended. Anyone want to comment on the amendment to the motion?
Chinay Akabani, 100 Hubbard Street. As written, without the amendment, the Mount will no longer be able to use food trucks at night walk, or weddings, or any other events. Home Farm on Undermountain Road will not be able to use food trucks. Josh Billings will not be able to use food trucks if it's, if they are on the Lenox portion of the parking lot. And there's possibly other organizations that are involved also that use food trucks that I don't know about. But none of those would be able to use food trucks without this amendment.
Okay, we are voting on the amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, back to the article. Any comments on the article? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? This carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Special Education Stabilization Fund, current cap of $250,000 to the maximum amount allowable, which is 2% of the annual net school spending total as allowed by Chapter 40, Section 13 of the General Laws.
Second. Okay, explanation.
This is a reserve fund that can be used in future years for unanticipated unbudgeted costs of special education, out-of-district tuition, transportation, and recovery of high school tuition. Funds in the reserve fund can only be expended or transferred out of a majority vote of both the school committee and the select board. The town created this fund at the 2017 annual town meeting, and there's extensive language. If you'd like me to read it, I will, but it's boring.
Okay, we are voting on Article 17. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you.
I'm going to try to avoid the boring talk as well. Article 18, Neil Maxman, Cliffwood Street. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $246,780 for the Wastewater Collection System Asset Management Plan, which is comprised of $147,647 in a reimbursal grant, in-kind services which are noncash provided by the town valued at $68,902, and a cash contribution from the town valued at $29,529 to be paid from the sewer enterprise funds. To authorize the DPW, the Director of Public Works, to act on behalf of the town to file for and accept the funds in connection with the grant and the project, including entering into a financial assistance agreement with the Clean Water Trust on such terms and conditions as the Director of Public Works and the Clean Water Trust shall agree to, and to submit any and all documents and certifications necessary or advisable. Do you want two paragraphs, or basically, we've been offered a grant of $246,000. We're required to tell you the total amount. We're getting for free $147,000 or $148,000 round numbers. We're using our own people for $68,000. That's the people that work at the DPW, their payroll, the existing equipment. It's not going to be overtime, it's not outside of their normal work, it won't be at the expense of doing their normal work. And basically, we're asking for $29,000 and change from our free cash, excuse me, from the sewer enterprise fund, so there's zero impact to your taxes. Okay with the non-boring version?
Okay, we are voting on Article 18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous. All right, and Article 19 just is to make sure that you get out to vote on Monday at town elections. Town moderator for Selectmen, Board of Health, Assessor, School Committee, Planning Board members, so please get out and vote, and thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, everyone have a great night. Thank you for coming out.